Everybody's attention, before we get started, I'd like to ask everybody to please turn your cellphones off or put them on vibrate only. So we don't have any disruptions in the meeting, would appreciate that. And if you want to speak to commission and you're not an applicant or an agent, but wanted to speak to our call of the public or on any agenda item tonight, please fill out one of these forms at the back and give it to our staff. So we can have your name and mark which item you're going to talk about. With that, I would like to bring to order the City of Cottonwood Planning and Zoning Commission regular meeting, Monday, February 26, 2018, at 6:03 PM. First, call to the order, clerk, may we have a roll call, please, of members?
Commissioner Hart.
Present.
Commissioner Wasden.
Here.
Commissioner Narwood.
Here.
Vice Chairman Williams.
Here. Thank you. The next is approval of the minutes. Do I hear from the previous meeting, which was in December 18, 2017, do I hear any corrections or additions to those minutes? Gentlemen? All right. I'll entertain a motion for approval.
I move that we approve the minutes for our meeting of December 18, 2017, as indicated in our packet.
Second motion.
I have a motion by Commissioner Wasden, a second by Commissioner Narwood, for approval of minutes. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So carried. The next item, before we get into our next item, as everybody at this table knows and our staff, that our longtime chairman and member, Ed Kyler, has had to resign because of medical reasons. And I really want to personally thank Ed for all his many years, some 15 years of service on this commission and many years as chairman. He served us very well. He was very dedicated in keeping all of us in line and keeping things going forward. And we're going to miss him a lot. So that being, we do have our quorum tonight. We do have an annual election of the chairman and the vice chairman. So I would like to open the floor for nominations for chairman for this next year. Do I have any motion for any nominations?
I'd like to nominate you, Mr. Vice Chairman, Mr. Williams, for chairman of the commission.
Okay, do I have a second on that?
Second.
Do I have any other nominations? Okay, I'll close the floor. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion is carried. Thank you, I guess. Now, I'd like to open the floor for nominations for vice chairman. And if Mr. Wasden is agreeable, I would like to nominate Judd Wasden for vice chairman. Do I have a second?
Second motion.
Okay, any approval from Mr. Wasden?
Not yet.
Not yet. Okay, all in favor of that motion?
Aye.
Aye. Motion and nomination is carried. Congratulations, Mr. Wasden. You are now the new vice chairman. Okay, getting that out of the way, I will now have our next segment, which is the call to the public. At this time, for the public to comment on any matter that does not appear on the agenda, that's very important, does not appear on our agenda. Commission members may not discuss items not identified on the agenda pursuant to law. Actions taken as a result of public comment will be limited to directing staff to study the matter, responding to criticisms, or scheduling the matter for consideration at a later date. Comments will be limited to five minutes for each person. I do not have anything on any slips of paper, so I assume we have, nobody wants to speak in general to the call of the public, so we'll go on with our agenda. The next item is old business. We have no old business. Going on to new business. Our first item is PCU 18-001 Animal Sanctuary. Jim, are you taking care of that?
Thank you, Chairman Williams. As you stated, this is a conditional use permit for a proposed animal sanctuary. Currently, the zoning is AR 43, which is agricultural residential. Forty-three thousand square foot minimum lot size. In that zoning district, it does allow certain agricultural uses and expanded use of, for care of animals in that agricultural district. In order to have the animal sanctuary as proposed, the applicant is required to have a conditional use permit. The current zoning would allow the two horses or donkeys. Goats would only be permitted as a show animal for a person having a special project that resided at that property. The applicant in this conditional use permit is requesting to allow two miniature donkeys, a regular-sized donkey, a mule, and four goats. The request would be to offer between 9:00 AM and 5:00 AM by appointment only, for people to come for therapy sessions, to connect with the animals, people that might be needing the attention and care that an animal would provide. The existing building on site is a single-family residence, and there are a few various outbuildings, agricultural type, for animals that have been there for a substantial period of time. Parking would be on-site behind the fenced area. We have received two inquiries from adjacent property owners. Both of them were just to gather information. We haven't had anyone complaining, registering any complaints on the site. And that was submitted in your packet after the first meeting that wasn't held. We did receive a letter of neighbors in support of the project. The site is at the north end of 14th Street where it dead ends. It's approximately a one-acre parcel in this odd-shaped parcel. The Cottonwood ditch runs just on the north side, and this is Riverfront Park in that area. This is the Cottonwood Cemetery. This would be the main entrance and the front gate, the subject site. They're looking over the fence and looking towards the east. And this is the residence on site. Just some of their fencing, the areas where the animals would be contained. This is an adjacent property, the closest one, just outside of the gates of the subject That would be the neighbors to the south, looking south on 14th Street. Across the ditch and actually on, in unincorporated Yabapai County area is a large acreage property. So that's the end of the slideshow, sort of getting back to the reason for the conditional use permit in the beginning, was the applicant's desire to provide the animal therapy to those who may need it. Susan Masters is the applicant. She is here this evening, should you have any questions for her or something that staff can't answer.
Gentlemen, do I have any questions? Jim?
I have a question.
Mr. Wasden?
I just had one question, Jim. In the packet under background, it indicates occasional fostering of animals may be done on a limited basis. Do you have any clarification on that, or is that something we can address with the applicant?
I think I'd let the applicant address that. We have talked about that a little bit, and it would be on a very occasional, since she does have the site and the facility, that should there be something with, as I understood, smaller animals, the dogs, the cats, that would be on a very short term, just till they found a permanent home.
Commissioner Norman?
I don't have any questions at this time.
Okay, thank you, Jim. Okay, Ms. Masters? Floor is yours. You'll speak into the microphone. Give us your name, please.
My name is Susan Masters.
All right. And the floor is yours to talk about your operation and if you will, address the occasional fostering question that came up.
Okay. Well, like it was stated, is I would like to have a sanctuary where people can come for some animal therapy, animal-assisted therapy. And the occasional fostering was just something I wanted to have available to me. It would not be a constant thing by any means, but if something did arise where an animal did need to be fostered for a short period of time, I wanted to be able to have that option.
Okay. And what kind of, you're talking mainly small animals?
Small animals.
Okay. All right. Commissioner Hart, you have any questions?
I'm curious about the definition of show. Is that animals that are being used in competition, like in fair?
None of them are for show. That's the existing zoning.
The existing zoning, like it says, goats would be allowed, okay, in this special project, say four age.
Yes, okay. Yeah, that's what I was wondering if it was the equivalent of four age. No, okay.
I just had a question, and then leading probably into discussion, the fostering just seems so general that this is what gets us into trouble down the road, that when you say a few animals, it's not defined, and you say a short period of time, that's not defined. And that's where I think outside of what you've proposed for the neighbors and the area, that that becomes an issue when there's five dogs and they're there for six months and they're barking.
Oh, well, I didn't, I put it as one at a time, so if it will be one animal at a time, so it wouldn't be five dogs, and so it would be one animal, maybe with some, like a cat with kittens or something like that, or a dog with some puppies until they need it. But it would not be more than one animal at a time that would be needing to be fostered.
So would you be okay with us specifying that so that that's clear?
Oh, yeah.
So, okay.
Absolutely.
That's what I'm trying to get at. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Commissioner Norman?
No questions. You answer my questions.
Okay, fine. I think you've really answered the big question we had. And no other question. Is anybody from the public that wants to speak to this item? I don't have any slips. So unless you, you have any further comments, or, okay, fine. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. All right, I'll close the floor to the public at this time for comments from the commissioners and further questions if you have them. Mr. Hart?
I don't know. I think it's just a really great idea that there's somebody in the community who's going to provide this service for people who need something to identify with. Just think it's a really good idea.
Correct. Mr. Wasden?
Yeah, I don't have any problem with it, other than, you know, in the past, we've gotten in trouble by not being specific. So I'd like to, as she indicated, decide what that would be, if it's one foster animal at a time, something so that that doesn't come back to haunt us down the road.
I think we could make that a stipulation for the motion, and like one animal, maybe some babies, or something along the line, small animal and babies.
Yeah, I agree.
Commissioner Norman, any other questions?
Limit to indicate the maximums.
Yeah, whatever in type of, you know, the small animals is supposed to. I don't have any further comments, other than I think it fits in very well with our community, the agricultural nature of our, overall of our community, and it's a great location for such a use. And I do second the motion that we need to limit the fostering or make some definition of it going forward, just for everybody's clarification. So, Commissioner Vice Chairman, I would entertain a motion if you would, sir.
I move that we approve PCU 18-001 Animal Sanctuary with the following stipulation: One, the project conforms to Code Review Board comments from November 28, 2017. Two, a certificate of zoning compliance documenting the completion of condition shall be issued prior to the issuance of certificate of occupancy. And three, that foster animals shall be limited to one and their nurturing offspring for a temporary amount of time. I don't know if we want to say what temporary amount of time is, but...
I think we should maybe limit it to the number of days, maybe 120 days, or is that, would that be?
And small animals, too.
Like three months.
Say small animal.
Yeah, small animals and their nurturing young, which could be dogs and cats. And for a three-month period, does that, does that work? Okay.
Okay. Amber, are we clear on that motion? Everybody clear on the motion? Do I have a second to that motion?
Second.
Okay. Commissioner Narwood, first, whatever. All right, I have a motion from Vice Chairman Wasden, and second by Commissioner Narwood. Any further discussion before we vote on the comments on this? Okay. All in favor? Signify my aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion unanimously carried. Okay. Next item. Thank you very much. Good luck.
Good luck, yeah.
Yes. Next item is DR 17-003 Monument Sign Approval for Circle K Gas Station and Convenience Store.
Thank you, Chairman Williams. As you stated, this is a design review for the monument signs for a Circle K located at the corner of Mingus and Main Street. Previously, you've seen this before as design review for the project itself, as well as some of the building wall signage. At that meeting, the height of the monument sign was discussion item at that meeting. And commission at that time asked for the applicant to consider lowering their sign and revising what would meet a proposed lower sign code amendment that we were working on at the time. So as I said, the previous approvals approved the site, the wall signage, the layout in general of the project. The placement of the two monument signs, one would be on Mingus and the other on Main Signs would be adjacent, adjacent to the driveway aisles. The height of the new proposed sign would be 10 feet 6 inches, which includes a 6-inch cap on top. The previous proposal was 16 feet 6 inches, so this does come down substantially lower than it was. The new code, as it goes into effect, would have a 10-foot-high maximum height. So the question could be, well, this is 10-6 versus a new sign of 10 feet. Why the difference? We felt that when they submitted, the height was actually substantially higher. This is what commission wanted to see and what our new code, the intent of the new code, is. As I stated, it's on the corner of Mingus and Main. It would be this entire section where Goodwill and a few other buildings are located, and they will be removed. That's the subject site, plus there's Goodwill, and these buildings here will be removed. This is a conceptual drawing of what the building would look like from the street view. The two signs in question, right here along the Main Street frontage, and right here along the Mingus Avenue frontage. They both meet the setback of being five feet within the property line. And this is what the sign would look like. So we have 10 feet from the base up to the top of the signage portion, and then a 6-inch cap on top. So this is the, you know, basically why we're back tonight, the applicant is requesting approval for these two signs at those two locations, modifying the previously approved design review. With that, that's all I have to say. So if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer those.
Commissioner Narwood?
Jim, just out of curiosity, their original discussion on sign was 16 feet, and they're obviously coming in for a lot less. At the time that they presented the original sign, this sign, the current use that they could have, could be 16 feet, but it isn't because of the new zoning?
That's...
Which is it? That's what I'm trying to get my arms around.
At the time they submitted, it could have been higher than the...
Right.
...six inches. So even 16 would have technically qualified for the zone, for the...
Right.
...height at that time.
But now, at this time, they don't qualify to have 16 feet?
16 feet would not qualify, correct?
No.
You follow, you think, you understand what I'm asking?
Yeah. Application was submitted way before we changed the ordinance, so this would fall under the 16 feet.
Okay.
So they are doing it on their own.
That's what I wanted to hear. Thank you. Thank you.
Any other questions, sir?
No more for me.
Okay. Commissioner Hart?
No questions.
Mr. Wasden?
Just one question on the brightness. I know we talked about this before on those LED, is that adjustable? I know we've talked about some of those in the area, they're so blazing bright at night, about, and I think in code somewhere, we have a measurement for that. And so I want to make sure that that is, I know there's, the new one up the road is so bright, I don't know, I know we addressed that in that signing code, the electronic sign code. So maybe that's a question for the applicant, if that's adjustable to, so it's not blazing through the night.
We could address that. We haven't really looked at this as a message board, like, you know, similar to the other one, only because the only changing text...
Right, it doesn't change, it was just the brightness that was coming off from those.
Okay. Then we would have to look at the lumen count and make sure that it's all within what...
Right.
Okay. Okay. We can possibly make that a stipulation, if followed in the code. Okay. I don't have any questions. Jim?
The dark sky. Yeah, well, we have the dark sky ordinance...
Right, so...
You know, that would...
They'd have to meet the code, yeah.
There's something in the electronic sign thing that regulates the output of that, too. We did that a couple of years ago, remember? It was, I forget the term that...
Turn it down.
Yeah.
Hmm.
I think we have a way to address that.
Yes, I think so. All right, thank you. Representative from the Circle K, would you like to address this, please?
They're hiding in the back over there.
All righty.
Hi, good evening.
Good evening. If you'd speak into the microphone, and please give us your names, please.
My name is Tracy Rodell, representative for Circle K Land Development Consultants.
All right.
And Susie Peel with Circle K.
Thank you very much. Ladies, the comments are...
I just did want to comment that the pricing, digital pricing, is static. It's not flashing or non-flashing. And definitely, we will take into account whatever your sign code allows for the allowable lumens.
Okay.
So it's not too bright.
Good deal, thanks.
Otherwise, we would appreciate your support.
Right. Commissioner Narwood, any questions?
No questions, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Hart? Any questions?
Not questions.
All right, no questions, all right. Mr. Wasden, Vice Chairman?
No, I don't have any questions, but I appreciate, I know this is your second trip up here after last month, so I appreciate that, and also just the height difference, because that means a lot to us. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Okay. Yeah, the only question I have is just a, just a general question on development schedule, or any update on that?
Not at this point.
Not at this point, okay.
We're constrained by some factors out of our control.
All right.
With all the properties repaired.
Yes, I can appreciate that. Thank you very much. Thank you, ladies, very much. I don't have any slips from the public for comment on this. All right. So I'm going to close the floor to the public and ask for comments from the commissioners, starting with Commissioner Hart.
The only observation, well, the one observation I had was trying to find a word to describe that base. It just sort of, I mean, I understand that with the reduction in height, you still have to have a certain amount of room for the sign, so the fact that it's very not substantial, I understand that, but it just, it looks light, or, sorry, I can't find the word, right words for it. But yeah, it's just, it doesn't look like a very substantial base for a monument sign, for something that we call a monument sign. And, you know, it's just, I'm, you know, looking at it as a design element, and I'm going, you have the signings, and then you get to the base, and then it's in.
Question for staff, they meet there within the signage, restricted as far as square footage?
Right there, within the square footage of a monument-type sign that would be allowed. Previously, when they had, to answer your question a little bit, when they had a 16-foot-high sign, this base here, instead of being approximately one foot, was about, was the same design, just about five feet higher. So the...
So basically, everything just...
Sign itself has not significantly changed. The base is what did change in order to meet, I think on a 16-foot-high sign, that might have looked a little bit proportionately odd, but only being a 10-foot-high sign, and to meet the intent of that being the maximum of the code. And I think they can address that with some foundational landscape planting to make it look at home and not just stuck out there in the middle of a yard somewhere.
Right. Okay. Any other questions, comments, sir? All right. Vice Chairman?
I think it looks good. Again, I appreciate them working with the height, and so I'm good with it.
Okay. Any further comments, sir?
Yeah, just a comment. I think it's a very good trade-off for the town to have a lower sign by four or five feet. And I very much appreciate Circle K accommodating us on that issue. Thank you. Did a good job.
Yeah. I would second that also. I think I like the positioning of the signs a little bit better. We had some concerns last time, they seemed like they were getting closer to the corner, and we were concerned about visibility and some things. So this is much better locations as well with that. And so with that, I will entertain a motion, Vice Chairman?
I move that we approve Project DR 17-003 Monument Signage with the following stipulation: One, that the freestanding monument signs be constructed in conformance with the sign plan submitted for the January 22, 2018, meeting, and may, as may be further modified by the Planning and Zoning Commission. Two, that the overall project is in... Two, that the overall project is developed in conformance with the conditional use permit and design review stipulations as approved at the June 19, 2017 meeting of Planning and Zoning Commission. Three, a certificate of zoning compliance documenting the completion of design review conditions, including the sign plan, shall be issued prior to the certificate of occupancy. Four, a sign permit is required under separate permit. Monument sign must be located at least five feet within the property line. And number five, that the lumens output be in accordance with our dark skies and electronic signage coding.
Before we do a second on this, just a technical correction to your first stipulation. I think we did it with a period at the end of 2018 meeting period.
Sure.
We don't want to do any further modification. We're approving it tonight as submitted and with these particulars. So with that, do I have a second?
Second motion.
Second. Commissioner Norwood? I have a motion by Vice Chairman Lawson, a second by Commissioner Norwood. Any further discussion before we vote on this motion? If so, all in favor, indicated by aye.
Aye.
Carried unanimously. Ladies, thank you again for your patience and safe trip home. Next item, Z 13-022 Skyline Condominium Units. This is for consideration of extension of our previous approval for rezoning of this property on May 18, 2015. Scott, would you take the floor, please?
Thank you, Commissioner Williams. Sorry, Chairman Williams. Get used to that.
Gee, I thought I got it.
As you mentioned, Z 13-022 Skyline PAD Rezone. This is an extension request to a stipulation that was part of the final rezone approval. It's on three parcels of property located in between Main Street and 16th Street. The two properties here are already partially developed. They're addressed off of Main Street, even though they sit far enough back off of there. This parcel adjoins 16th Street and the original request was to rezone from R1, R2, R3, and C1 to PAD. Several meetings were held, if you remember, October, November 2013. The project was tabled a couple times. I believe we even had a different venue to hold a meeting at with all the...
I don't remember that.
People that had shown up. May 18 of 2015, the planning commission recommended approval to the city council and on September 15 of 2015, the city council approved ordinance number 614 for the rezone. The stipulation that has led us back here tonight is stipulation number three in that ordinance that required construction permits to be applied for within two years of the date of approval or the property would revert back to its former zoning classification. That continued to say without legislative action. State law prohibits that. So we recently, back in November of 17, revised the ordinance to reflect that and that's why it's here again tonight, is to get your recommendation to city council to extend the conditions of approval or whatever you decide tonight. The applicant is requesting that it be a permanent rezone with no timeline on it. Here's again what originally was zoned, kind of give you a brief history. I know some of you weren't here at this time. Here's the R1. This parcel in the middle was zoned R1 and partially R2. The R2 is where the existing apartments currently are. This one's R3 and this one's C1. So it had four different zonings across three parcels. Sorry, I gotta switch this way for the camera. I forgot about that. Just a little information again, the site address is off Main Street on the two parcels and that's what it originally looked like. Here's some original information that was provided on the original presentation on the densities that could be built there with the existing zoning before it was changed to PAD. If you remember, again, a lot of the adjoining neighbors protested this rezoning. In the end, it sounds like most of their concerns were worked out with the property owner. They are only going to do 41 units if they end up building out the way they're planning on doing so. Also, it's important to note that they will be coming back to the commission for design review approval, site plan approval, all of that. This is just for the rezone. That's their site plan that was proposed and approved. That's the typical conceptual units that they were showing there. Again, some elevations of floor plans and again, this is all conceptual. It would be brought back when they move forward with the construction of it. That's our landscape plan, landscaping throughout. The density and the land use meets the current general plan, tied to density residential. These are some original site photos. Nothing's changed on there. Nobody's done anything out there as far as development of the site. So it's sitting as it has been from the original approval. The applicant is here to answer any questions on timelines or what they would specifically like and why they haven't done anything yet. I can answer any other questions you may have.
Commissioner Hart, do you have any questions? No.
I do.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, in looking at the site design, land use, what's the remaining approximately On the second page, in other words, you're showing the percentage of the site devoted to building coverage, to open space, and to landscaping, but it comes up to 84%.
Mr. Chairman?
That's all in the past as far as...
Scott, excuse me, just a second.
He's answering now, I guess. This is just a time extension. We are not getting into details of the approved project.
Okay.
I, yeah, and I'd have to find what you're looking for. I believe what you're looking for is off the original staff report. Is that right? Or is it...
It's right here in the book. If I asked a question that I shouldn't have, I apologize.
It's just showing site design, land use, and it breaks down to 84, 85%. And I guess the question is just where's the other 15%? We can ask the applicant, I guess.
Okay. I see what you're looking at, yeah.
We're talking about...
Yeah, so, really, we're just talking about the timeline tonight, so, but, go forward. I don't have any questions other than the time. Need to talk to the applicant, so, who is here representing the owner tonight?
I guess I would now be here. I would be myself, I'm Jesse Dowling.
Yes.
I haven't been in the council room since I was in the council room.
Yes, all right.
Jesse Dowling with Pender Engineering. I'm here as a representative of Pender Engineering and we did a lot of the work that you saw there. And also, the son of the previous owner is here. So a little bit of backstory, if it wasn't included in there very well. The reason for this lapse in process has been that after the approval, Mr. Graham was having some health difficulties and unfortunately passed away. In that time, you know, I think he was a pretty, generally a pretty busy fellow and had a lot going on and there was some breakdowns in communication perhaps or notifications as far as the status of that project. So it sort of lapsed in between and we, you know, there was some catching up that got done and we reached out. Once the deadline expired, we reached out to his son and kind of gotten this back together and going through this process to extend it. In light of that, we were kind of hoping to, what we would really like to do is this process, the project will still be developed. There's still some working on details and the fallout from losing a loved one in our situation. So they're just hoping to get permanent approval for the zoning on this so that they can develop it per the master plan that was already submitted, the master development plan. And any other development that will take place will come back for design review further. So there will be chances, you know, with the errant 16% and things like that, we can certainly address those questions at that point.
Sounds good.
I'd be happy to answer any questions you have. I did put together just a touch of, a touch here, that the PAD zoning would actually be a little bit more compliant with the general land use plan going forward than having a mishmash of different zonings across multiple sites. You know, and there was also a lot that went into developing that master development plan and getting the property ready. There had been some prior grading and drainage that was done in order to make the way for what's going to come to pass. So while a lot of work may not have been, you know, ground may not have been broken or permits applied for, there was quite a bit of work put into getting us to that point. And they just don't want to lose that forward momentum in trying to develop this and trying to keep things moving ahead so that we can get a little bit more housing stock in the valley so that prices might go down a touch for everybody. So anyway, that's what they're really hoping for, is to just proceed and work together with the city to develop it as we've all kind of agreed to prior.
Okay. Okay. Mr. Hart, do you have any questions?
Well, mine was the same, same one as before.
We'll head to that design review down the road. It's just a question for them to consider going forward. Commissioner Norwood, do you have any...
I'm fine.
What timeframe have you been talking about? I understand the preference is a permanent change, but what timeframe?
I'm a little bit of a curveball myself, my employer, Tom. The reason I'm here is that Tom Pender had a really close friend who lives in Kansas who passed away, Tim Voist, who was the superintendent here in town. Tom's actually back there right now helping tend to taking care of his estate and putting that in order. So I have, I got a call last night as to, hey, can you get to the meeting? And I, so I'm here, I don't know the exact timetable for further development. I think that the family is still sort of trying to, trying to sort through the holdings of Mr. Graham and assess where they're going to be able to take that. They just want to be able to know that they can proceed with this and not maybe they'll have to keep coming back every so often for approvals. I honestly am not 100% sure on their timeframe. His son is here, Mr. Keith Graham is here and so he may be able to, he may have a better aspect or more insight into that, if you like to ask him.
All right. Yes, we will. Because one of the questions I would like to add, and probably Mr. Graham, too, you would be able to answer, Mr. Dowling, is, as I recall, Vice Chairman, when you and I were on the commission at that time, one of the questions came up and it appeared to us that the Grahams were not really going to be the developers. They were getting this rezone and set up so that if a developer came in, an actual builder would come in and build this project out. You're probably not, Mr. Graham can probably answer that.
Just, I do remember that specific aspect.
Yeah.
And I think that a lot of that, a lot of this may have actually been Mr. Graham kind of foreseeing and trying to get his affairs in order for his kids if he was to come to pass, given his age. That's sort of how I remember, was trying to get the house in order to where everything was kind of neatened and buttoned up and buttoned up.
Yeah, that was, Mr. Graham?
Yes, what you're, state your name, please. Ethan Graham.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, to address that last one, that may have been true, what Jesse was just saying about getting his affairs in order, but it was more of an insurance thing. There was no actual plan to sell the property off.
All right.
And the same remains true. So we have zero intention of selling. It's a very good investment and we'd like to develop it further. To answer your question, there are certain things we would do immediately in terms of the current construction. We would do some conversions as a storage unit that we want to convert into either an apartment or condominium based on, you know, what we hear here. And as far as the large, you know, 41 thing, I'm still catching up, you know, with figuring out where my dad was at with all this stuff and there's a whole bunch of variables and complications. So I don't exactly know and that's one of the reasons that if we could get a permanent zoning thing, we'd really have plenty of time to do it. If it's a two-year thing, you know, I can't promise that we would get it done in that time, you know?
Very good. Any other questions?
No.
On the time, situation, construction?
How about four years?
I mean, that's better than two. I just, I'm becoming as a representative of the family, but, you know, Tom Pender probably knows more than the current members of the family other than my dad knew, you know? So it's very hard for me to guess the timing.
Okay. I don't have any further questions. Thank you, sir, very much. We appreciate it and, all right. I have one slip from the public for comment. Mr. Philip Moyer, you're at the podium, sir. If you'll give us your name over the microphone for recording.
Yeah, Phil Moyer, 1642 Crestview Circle, the house right there on the left on the top with the high point looking out over everything. Basically, what, there were 90 letters that came in objection previously and the reason they objected, because we didn't know what was going to happen in our neighborhood and we didn't know what it was going to look like. And so that concerned us about the values of our property. I empathize with the loss of your father. And I understand from a real estate point of view that this is all about value. They would like to keep their zoning approved and as it was approved. And they may or may not keep it. They may or may not be the developers, but if they can get a fixed zoning, what we would be called block zoning on a development, that means that they could sell it to anybody that they would want to, anytime that they would want to. And the longer period of development time that they can offer to a buyer is going to increase the value of the property. And that's all fine and great. I just want to point that out. But the 90 people that were part of our committee to find out what was going on and what was going to be our neighbors, were concerned about our property values because we're surrounded by pretty much pretty nice houses and then when somebody says condominiums, we're thinking, oh my gosh. And when we asked about through the process, would there be a limitation to how many in your CCNRs? Well, there's no CCNRs. You guys don't have anything to do with CCNRs. Okay. Well, so if you, it could all be rentals. We could sell condos to investors that would want to rent them and they would all be rentals. So that didn't sound too appealing, but there's no regulation on that because they don't have to cover CCNRs. It's unfortunate everybody's gone tonight, but all I've heard is about a bunch of humming and hon about specifics and that's still my concern being right there and my neighbor's concerned, what are the specifics? So I guess I would recommend, I think it was amiable agreement that we made when this was approved and that's fine, but part of it was a lot of promises of details that were going to get worked out in design review committees that we had asked, I myself, can I be a part of that and be notified? Because, you know, you guys made a lot of promises about fences and about lighting and all these things and somebody has to be the policeman here, you know? Otherwise, the zoning people could move and the councils can change and nobody remembers what those details were. And the devils and the details. I said it the last time around when we were here. So that's all I'm asking for. I think that if you're going to give them an unlimited time range to do whatever they want with the property based on the broad vision, then you should ask for more details now before you grant that. So tell us what the lighting is. Show us what, all those things that were empty that we're all afraid of, show us how you're going to do what you said and make it right and it's going to conform with our existing neighborhood housing. I think that before you were to give them an unlimited right or a block zoning for that, those details should be worked out and provided with the public's input as was offered before along the way. Otherwise, I think you ought to stay with a two-year program and see what happens. Basically, all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Moyer. Any other further comment from the public? I don't hear anything. I'll close the floor to comments and first question to Baron from me before we get to start it. we get to started. Um, and in comment to Mr. Moyer's comments, in my recollection was that, uh, there was a lot of negotiation during that two-year period, which I remember, and with the neighbors and concerns. And they did come up with, I, we thought, and you testified before us, that you had a basic agreement that this, this concept, uh, would be something that everybody could live with. Um, basically tonight we're, we're voting on an extension of approved plan. It has, they still have to come back to whoever builds this is going to have to come back before this commission and with details of lighting, traffic flow, design, uh, exactly what's going to be built. And, and those concerns I think will be handled at that point. Um, and, uh, the PAD zoning is a concept, is the basic concept, okay? We go forward with that and, uh, um, we will, uh, that's what we're, we're here about tonight. So, uh, it's strictly an extension of the timeframe. Do we want to do, um, and what this is with your comments, well, and your, your thoughts on this as to the time extension, as to, should we make it a permanent zoning change? Recommendation to the city council, we are recommending here. This is, we're not approving anything, we're recommending to the city council. They have the final say on this extension. So what is our recommendation? Uh, one year, two years, four years, uh, permanent? Uh, I'll start with Commissioner Hart over here and get your feeling on that.
Well, I'm uncomfortable with the concept of unlimited. I think the two years sounds reasonable in terms of, you know, once the approval, having some submittals coming in. So I would, I think the two years sounds reasonable.
Commissioner Norwood?
I think we should put a limit on time, Mr. Chairman. I think two, anywhere between two and four years would be reasonable. I would prefer two.
Yes.
And, uh, I would definitely like not, like Mr. Hart, I, I would not want to rezone this property in perpetuity, not knowing really when things would be happening.
The concept.
Yeah.
I agree. I, there was a lot involved in this a few years ago and I think two years is sufficient time to, it's what we originally stipulated and I think that's ample time to, um, the applicant indicated there were some things that they could do right away and, um, I'm hopeful that they proceed forward. Uh, I think it's a good project, but I think two years is ample time to, uh, based on what we did before to extend this time.
Yeah, we have one example of this perpetuity that I'm aware of is at the Verde Santa Fe North, which was approved 30 years ago by this, the Upai County Planning and Zoning Commission and supervised and transferred to the city and, and, uh, that, that basic concept where, which is 30 years old, we're still strapped with today. So, uh, I, uh, I agree, uh, you know, in perpetuity would, uh, probably from an increased standpoint make it easier, but I, I think this, uh, legislative, we can continue to approve it, the commission. Uh, it, uh, hopefully, uh, we can get, you know, come back in two years, we'll know a little bit more what you need to do and, and I think the market will still be here and growing and, and, uh, that should be a very marketable property if you decide not to develop yourself, I would think. So, uh, with that, I'll entertain a motion. Vice Chairman?
Uh, I recommend that we recommend to the city council, um, the following for Z-13-022 Skyline Condominiums with the stipulations. Um, number one, that the project conform to code review board comments dated June 25th, 2013. And two, that the project be extended for another two-year period.
We're recommending to the city council.
Yes.
Do I have a second to that recommendation?
Second.
Second? Okay. Uh, Vice Chairman Lawson has made a motion. Commissioner Hart has seconded the motion for approval for a two-year extension of, uh, Z-13-022. Um, any other discussion or comments on the motion? None? Uh, vote?
Oh, real quick?
Yes, excuse me, yes.
Just to clarify, because this is a recommendation to council and council is to make that determination.
Yes.
Want it two years from the date of this meeting or two years from when council, if they decide to approve it, they, two years from that date?
I think it was two years from the date council did it last time.
It was last time. It was two years from the effective date of the ordinance.
Yeah.
Okay.
Want that same?
Yeah, that's amended motion, second, same?
Yeah.
Does any problem? Uh, okay. All in favor of that amended motion?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
You'd ask, we carry. Thank you very much, gentlemen. We appreciate it. Good, good, good luck.
Yep, good luck.
All right. All right. Going on to our next item is CP, it's actually two items, General Plan, GP-18001, Amending the General Plan and Z-18001, Inspiration at Codwood for a zoning change to PAD. Scott?
Thank you again, Chairman Williams. Um, GP-18001 and Z-18001, um, just a reminder, they are two separate items with two separate motions, but I'm going to do one presentation for the both of them. There's a piece of property on 89A just across from Candy Lane, next to the El Rio de Oro Mobile Home Park, uh, kind of borders another small piece of vacant land, um, and then a bank and then some industrial vacant properties here and some industrial uses here further on the west side. Currently the property is dual zone, C2 heavy commercial and I2 heavy industrial. The applicant is proposing to rezone the entire crop, I was going to take that back, rezone nine acres out of the 11 to PAD to construct 192 apartment units and leave approximately 2.4 acres for future commercial development. They have cut out that two acre piece. It's going to remain commercial zoned. They've done that minor land division already and moving forward with that. As it sits right now, the land use map with the general plan identifies this area as performance, commercial, industrial, PCI and general commercial due to the dual zoning there. They're requesting to change it from PCI and GC to plan development in order to move this project forward. The requirement is that the zoning matches what the general plan land use is. In this case, it does not do that if they were worked to rezone to PAD and leave land use alone. So that's where the general plan amendment comes in. That's why they're requesting that. As you can see, this area here is the PCI. This front area here is the general commercial and they're only requesting the portion that's going to be rezoned, this piece just approximately from here back to here, down and over approximately 2.4, 2.41 acres. That's going to remain general commercial as far as the land use map goes in general plan. So that section is not part of either one of these requests. It's only for the 9.01 acres that's being rezoned. Um, again, the current zoning is C2 and I2. They want to rezone to PAD. The entire property is approximately 11.42 acres with 9.01 for the apartment development and that 2.41 to be left for future commercial development. They want to do 192 uni- unit apartment complex. Um, it can be a mix of two and three-story apartments with some carriage units around the perimeter. Basically the apartment's going to be upstairs with a garage underneath it to accommodate parking. So some apartments are going to have a garage. Vehicle access is going to be from the west and the east ends of the property with approximately 320 parking spaces. Due to the proximity to the airport and navigation easement is going to be required to be recorded against the property. With recommendation from the FAA because they're concerned about this, they're going to request and we're going to require a stipulations in the lease that lesses will sign acknowledging that they're near the airport and they're going to have more noise than they would other parts of the city. Uh, there's going to be signs at the entrances indicating that there's going to be no more noise on that property than there would be in other parts of the city to help hopefully eliminate complaints and concerns about the airport noise. This again is just for the rezon to the PAD with what's presented tonight. The design review portion of the buildings, the site plan, the landscaping, all, all of that is not part of this request or approval. That's something that we brought back to the commission at a later date. Here's a close-up view. It doesn't show the entire property, but it gives you an idea of this cutout right here on the front bordering 89A. Here's towards the western edge of the property that shows one driveway entrance and then down here is another driveway entrance. This one here, kind of on the east, is almost directly across from Candy Lane. They are required to do a traffic impact analysis to determine what, if anything, may need to happen at those, those intersections. Uh, it's going to need to be reviewed and approved by ADOT. Right now they have a preliminary traffic impact analysis that's been done, um, but a full complete study will be done, given to ADOT, approved by them and then reviewed by the city engineer for any further comments that they may have. The utility department, water, sewer, wastewater, they don't have any concerns with capacities, anything like that. They were given the proposed numbers that were provided by the applicant. They had no comments. Their only biggest comment, which I believe you have, is to connect one of the sewer lines back here or water lines back here on Air Parkway. This is the overall site plan, again, showing the park that's cut out right here. Gives you further view of the driveway entrance on this edge of the property and this one here. This one's not quite on the other end of the property. You got some units here. Here's an example of where the carriage units are going to go across the edges here and back and around. Parking's going to be distributed throughout. Interior units, they're going to be anywhere from two to three stories. Clubhouse can be included, a pool, all the amenities you expect to find in an apartment complex. As far as this piece that's cut out, they were required to provide an access easement for this property so they don't have to try and get a third access drive off the state highway right here, which would likely not happen. So when they recorded this minor land division, they included access easements for this piece of property as well. So there shouldn't be any future access issues. General landscape plan proposed right now, they have ample landscaping throughout. Um, they're going to do a buffer zone right here to help buffer from the adjoining mobile home park along the back here where the industrial properties are. That's just an example of the building types. That's a very conceptual drawing of what they would look like. And again, the design review would come back to you for approval at a future date. That's the community building, the clubhouse, conceptual example of that. And here's some current pictures of what the property looks like. This is standing on the corner of 89A and Candy Lane looking across. The extent of the property reaches up this way, goes through here, that's kind of the center of it, and then down over here next to the mobile home park. That's Candy Lane right there. The, again, main entrance is going to be across over here on the highway. That's medical facilities basically are across the street on 89A. That's looking to the west, northwest on 89A. That's looking towards the east. That's off of Air Park Road. That cul-de-sac that's directly behind the property to the south. That's part of what borders it on that end, part of the mobile home park, some industrial uses back there. Another industrial use borders it. Just to clarify as well, um, I caught wind of some comments that are asking why access can't be granted off that cul-de-sac on Air Parkway right here. This property owner, go back to here, this cul-de-sac doesn't go all the way to this property and adjoining it. This property right here and this property right here own a strip in between there. So we can't require that they extend that road through the back right there. That's not in our hands. So the applicant is here to answer any questions that I may not be able to, any specific questions that you have.
Any questions to, for the staff? Um, not for staff. Okay.
Yeah, I was just wondering, um, this piece of commercial property, now, has that been settled as far as it's already been cut, cut away?
Yes, they have done the minor land division to cut that out and it's been recorded with the county.
So that's already legally done?
Yes.
Okay. My question then is, after the development is done, this land will remain vacant until they foresee that they should develop it further for commercial? What, would this be able to be, they would have to come back and revert back to another zoning change if they wanted to redevelop this piece of property for apartments? In other words, they decide that commercial use is no good anymore, business is not good as far as these type of developments are? And would they be able to come back and say, we want to add additional apartments to that piece of land?
Yes and no.
What would it take to do that?
I see your, um, I know in this one, let me look in C2 real quick.
I mean, the reason why I ask is that there's an awful lot of vacant commercial property in town.
Yeah.
And it would make more sense to me to integrate that now, not that they have to do it, but I'm just wondering what their motivation is because it doesn't look to me as if it's kind of hanging out there, you know?
So there's, there's two ways that it could go. Commercial properties can be developed into residential properties subject to the R3 standards, which allow multifamily residential with a conditional use permit. So they could come in and request a conditional use permit to put apartments on that commercial piece of property. Or if they wanted to request a rezon, they could potentially do that, start over with doing the minor land division and the rezon as well. So yeah, they could go either way. If they left it as C2 and did a conditional use permit, they would be stuck with the actual development standards for that zone, for the R3 zone with the setbacks and things like that. PAD lets them play with it a little bit. So they really have two options to go whichever way they wanted.
I got one more question then. Let's go back to the Airport Way.
Okay.
And on Airport Way, I understood, or at least I thought, that when you have a, a public street, which I believe that is, that the town has, there's easements involved off of the curbing. So wouldn't there be a, I mean, they own the land, but do they really own the land and to use it in, in such a way that the town, doesn't they have an easement?
I'm not sure what easements may be there. It's possible there could be utility easements, things like that, which in that case, no, the city wouldn't own those easements.
They would.
No. Sometimes easements are required to be granted, but the property owner still owns it, they just have to allow that easement to go through. Doesn't necessarily mean the city owns those easements.
Yeah. Because, I mean, it would make a lot of sense to have a third entrance and exit to that piece of property. There's no way that that could be worked out?
That would be up to the property owners to see if they wanted to try and work something out and then that would require additional traffic reviews from the city engineer to find out what would be happening on that.
Is it appropriate to ask them to do that?
You could ask, but you can't require it.
Could you, could we ask?
That's up to.
If we can ask, could we ask?
That's up to the commission to have that conversation with the applicant.
Thank you.
Uh, I just have a procedural question with regard to the, uh, motion on this, on the general plan amendment. We don't have to have any stipulations to that, do we? You, you have a list of stipulations, but that applies to the zoning.
Right, that applies to the rezon.
So we can just do a, just.
Right.
Just do a straightforward amendment to the general plan to, um, uh, to allow PAD zoning on this property. And then we, then we'll get into the, the actual zoning question. Okay? Uh, I don't have any further questions? actual zoning question, okay? Uh, I don't have any further questions, Scott. Representative from the owner, please, if you'll state your name, I'd appreciate it. And we are recording, so if you'll speak right into the microphone, please.
Good evening, Commissioner, Chairman. Uh, my name's Luke Sefton, I'm with Sefton Engineering. I'm representing the applicants. Um, I have the owners here with me tonight. Um, Bill Jump, um, you may know him, he's with Out of Africa, one of the owners of Out of Africa, and does that, and then Bob Porter, um, is also the other owner, and we are trying to, they came up with the concept for this project. Um, in this process of us designing this, how, this project, um, one of the things we had to do was a market study, and Cottonwood, or the Verdi Valley is about eighteen hundred units short of apartments, um, or multifamily housing. And so, we're trying to fulfill a real need here. Um, one of the things we went out was, uh, with the hospital and a few of the things that we've seen from them is that they really need, um, upscale apartments for their, uh, hospital. Um, so we're trying to do that here, um, with these. So we got a hundred ninety-two units, um, let me see if I can get to the... It just went the wrong way. So, if you look, um, when we first met with ADOT to talk a little bit about the traffic, when we first met with ADOT, um, we had a, and with the city, we had a little bit different configuration. We actually had some apartments here and we had some apartments down here. Um, but after those conversations, what we did was we, we took these apartments out and moved them there because there's another property owner here that's a small triangle. Um, and so we're really trying to, um, help them out with the driveway here so that they can access off of here. And so by this arrangements here, instead of subdividing and have multiple accesses along here, we're consolidating them into a main drive here and a secondary drive here for all the properties to use throughout that area. Um, in here, the city engineer asked for a water line. Again, we have to see if we can get across that, that piece of property to allow us there. Um, and we'd like to see a pathway go through here to allow for people to use this area for walking and bike paths and stuff, and cities ask for that. Um, and I would, and if there's anything you'd like to add, if you're the owner? And so, um, other than that, if you have questions, we're here to answer your questions and try to address your needs.
Okay.
Mr. Hart? I noticed quite a number of references to the number of handicap stall parking spaces. Is it your intent to provide handicap designed units? And do you have, you know, do you have any kind of a, a formula, like for every block, there's gonna be at least one unit that's gonna be designed for use by handicapped people? Something along those lines?
Yes, I mean, minimum ADA requires it. I mean, yeah, um, and I think it's like five percent of the units have to be ADA, and we'll have to put the parking close to those units. In fact, we asked, we actually have most of the grading plan done, and all these sidewalks were making so they're all ADA compatible. Um, and we had to adjust the pool around a little bit, so it was ADA. Um, so, we provided that. In fact, we're providing a mailbox unit here, um, so that also the parcels can be delivered there, and they can be notified. But, but, yeah, these units, I, the carriage units, just to let you know, those are, um, if you luck here, there's a set of stairs going up, and on this side is a one-bedroom unit and another one-bedroom unit. Those are kinda big units, nice units. But, um, those are kinda on the perimeter, but in here, we'll provide, place ADA units on the ground floor so that you can get access to them.
All right. Mr. Norwood?
Well-
Questions?
No questions, I'd just like you to look into the possibility, since you already have to encroach on that property.
Yeah, it was straight, we, we-
I mean, you, you mentioned you had to, you have to go put a pipeline through there, so you're gonna have to work something out, so maybe that's the time to look at it.
We'll talk to them, but yeah, when we were doing this, it was the traffic patterns up here of doing this, um, and it was, uh, and it worked out well. Um, here, they have, um, and often property owners will do this, where they, they'll put in the right-of-way, but then they hold that piece of property, just so that they can control anybody getting access from that direction. Or, a lot of times now, we handle it with a one-foot non-vehicle easement, but here, it's definitely part of the property and he has control over that, we don't.
I have a question.
Question? Um, timeframe, it appears in your presentation, you're talking about getting underway fairly within, soon as getting plans to finalize and, uh, backed us for design review and then process and then, uh, get approvals from the city and so forth, so we're not talking about, this is not a long-term, uh, project like the condominiums we just dealt with.
No, no, if you, if, if you guys had all the authority and could approve everything tonight, they would probably have trucks out there tomorrow, start building that thing. They're, they're anxious. Um, we're, we're well underway with, uh, we're at least fifty percent with the building plans. I'm probably about eighty percent with the onsite construction plans, so we're ready to, uh, turn around here and start as soon as we get through the process here.
I, I see, you can tell from our previous conversation that, uh, we don't like to be open-ended on this, and so, uh, we will probably put some kind of time constraint on this, uh, getting started, building permits and getting underway.
I, I think we could approve everything tonight and just see what-
Yeah.
See if the council's paying attention, right Baron?
[laughing]
I could probably do that.
I think we're ready, and I think the Verdi Valley really needs it.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, I have one more question. Uh, you gave an interesting statistics, and I'd like you to clarify that, if you would please. Um, you mentioned there's a shortfall of eighteen hundred dwelling units for Cottonwood area. Is it Cottonwood itself, correct?
I'm sorry, the Verdi Valley.
Verdi Valley, eighteen hundred?
Eighteen hundred.
Is that apartments, or is that total apartments, condos, homes, could you-
Multifamily. Apart, did it say specifically?
Just apartments.
Rental apartments.
Yeah, it sounds like a, a small number if you count the entire, you know, all, all types of dwellings, but just apartments.
Just apartments.
And was there a nu, was there a number for Cottonwood?
No.
No?
Um, I could, we could go through that, and I could, I, but I didn't look, they just overall, um, said that, but it was a very detailed study where they looked at all the different apartment units throughout the Verdi Valley.
What'd be your guess for Cottonwood?
Um, we're very sure. I, I believe, I mean, zoning probably knows that better than anybody else, but I, I'm, I deal a lot with Sedona's, um, um, apartment issues, Cottonwood, Camp Verdi. Um, I, you know, sit with the Verdi Valley Regional Economic Organization and we, with Phil, and we talk about that a lot, and there's a, there's a tremendous shortage of apartments here, and in fact, I had some clients that are building some houses and they needed to rent an apartment, um, and they drove right here to Cottonwood. They looked at it and they said, "Oh, by the way, we're gonna go look at another one, but we may take this one." And they got to the other one, it was already rented, they turned around and came back, and they said, "No, that's already been rented." So apartments are being rented.
Right.
If you want one, you better call and say you'll pay what you want and, and be there to sign it, so they're de, we're all desperate for apartments.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Yeah. Owners have any additional comments or anything to add to it?
I, I don't at this point.
Okay, no, that's fine.
We're, we're ready, ramped up, ready to go, so.
Okay, fine.
It's important we move ahead and, uh-
You wanna come up to the microphone and give us your name, please? We were recording all, we're recording all this, so we need to have you, uh-
I'm Bill Jump, I'm sorry about that.
No problem, Bill.
Uh, we're ramped up and ready to go, so, um, we think this is just the beginning of sup, of supply that we can come forward here within the Verdi Valley. Cottonwood in particular, we picked because we see this great site, we see the demand. Uh, I've been in the apartment business for thirty years, I've never seen a supply in the main curve quite like this, so we didn't have to be a genius to take advantage of it, and we plan to. So I would think there's at least a thousand units that would be coming into this near market that we see today.
Right. Thank you, sir.
All right.
Gentlemen, thank you.
One other thing, you know, we did meet with the neighbors-
Yes.
-in the, and they were all, um, happy to see that, they were happy to see that residential was gonna go in there instead of industrial. Um, the one thing they did ask is that we encourage a coffee shop to go in.
[laughing]
So, um, or deli or something, and-
I second that.
We would, we would like to, because it, it also enhances this project, so.
Yes.
But otherwise, thank you for your time.
All right, thank you. Uh, I don't have any, uh, slip from the public. Anybody else? Phil, you wanna get us a, get a slip for the staff here, real quick?
I'm gonna continue to share.
All right, would you fill out a slip when you're through, though?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You know that procedure, sir.
I'll get you a slip.
Your name, sir.
My name's Phil Turbell, I've lived in the valley here thirty years, I'm a real estate broker, and supply and demand drives the real estate market, and we are so short in supply of rental dwellings in the market. I would say that the Cottonwood market is at least eighteen hundred units short in its own, in the single-family homes and multifamily home, apartments, condos, whatever you wanna look at. Um, this is gonna be the new affordable housing product you're gonna see here, because single-family homes in an affordable housing price range is probably off the table now, with the price of development, construction, engineering, all of the components that are gonna come together. We're seeing construction costs going up. Um, I don't think we'll be able to supply single-family housing to an affordable, in an affordable price range, with the exception of manufactured housing, it's still in an affordable price range, but it's gonna be multifamily housing, it's gonna be the affordable price range. Cottonwood has provided the workforce for the valley for the thirty years I've lived here, I think it will continue to do that. Uh, we'll see Camp Verdi and Cottonwood both be the supplier of the affordable workforce housing requirements, so I think that we're gonna be seeing more and more of that. I agree with Mr. Jump when he says a thousand units, I think could very easily be coming forth, when we see the Circle K and we see the, all of the different projects that you guys have approved over the last six months or years that I come heckle you. Um, I, I, I think that we'll be seeing more demand than we see today. We've seen rental prices go up about twenty-five percent in the past year, year and a half. We're seeing houses that were renting for the eight to nine hundred dollars now at twelve hundred. It's such a short, sort of supply. Um, I, I, that's about all I know about that, and I think it's, there is real demand. Your comment about that circle, that Airport Way cul-de-sac access into the unit, I don't, I disagree with you. I think that you're inviting heavy industrial truck traffic into a residential development that's probably not geared to handle truck traffic coming out of a heavy industrial area. I think that I would think that over real close to say, "Do I wanna invite that traffic through this project to access eighty-nine A?", because that's what everybody does, is, that's the shortcut, it doesn't matter, you know, if it's, if it's designed for that or not, and you wouldn't design, I don't think, these as arterial streets to handle that kind of flow. Um, the other thing was, is the property in front of it, I think is a much better use as a commercial, as a buffer zone, to keep the noise level as we see the increasing traffic build on eighty-nine A, which we will, we're gonna see that traffic build up as we see development build up, everything that's gonna happen. Um, six hundred homes that's been approved out there at the vineyards is gonna increase the traffic, and I really think that we're gonna be looking for a, a buffer, a noise buffer in front of those hundred ninety-two units, so I think that that's probably, it'll be full before you know it. It, I, I think that that close in is, it'll be developed fairly soon, so. That's the world according to me, thanks.
Thank you, sir. [laughing] All right. Uh, no further comment, I'm gonna close the floor to the public. Start with Mr. Hart, your comments.
Nothing to discuss.
Any problems?
No.
You're all satisfied now, sir?
Everything's been said.
Good point. Vice Chairman.
I, I think it looks great, and I think the commercial, I know Tom asked, you know, down the road, we've got so many houses coming in, it wa, it wasn't too many years ago, they were talking a shopping center out at the Rosetta Ranch Road, so I think that's gonna fill in. I, uh, there's three families I personally know that are in this, uh, loop of trying to find a place, and I forget who said, uh, about, they went to look at a place, wanted to get a second option, by the time they got back to that first one, it was gone. It is really a difficult situation to find housing right now, which is a good thing in, on one aspect, if they're your friends, it's difficult to, you know, see them trying to find a place, but I think, um, this'll do well.
Good. Yeah, I second that. Uh, I think a perfect example, the senior apartments on Mingus that were built, um, they were rented out far in a com, prior to come, those sixty units just went bang overnight. They were, they were rented out before they even got halfway through construction, and, uh, and we have, uh, you know, another project out by the Catholic Church proposed, but, uh, they've got a ways to go yet, but this is, I like this project from the standpoint where it's located, right across the hospital, I can't agree more. They have a lot of employees over there, uh, a lot of them aren't doctors and high-paid administrators, they need, uh, and looking for this kind of housing, and I know they have a hard time. Um, we have some rental, I live in the Verde Heights area, we have some rental housing in there. I know, you know, they have six applicants, uh, for every house that comes available, you know, it just snaps right up and their prices are going up and up, and so I, I think this is a very, uh, has a lot of potential. And, uh, with that, uh, we'll first consider the general plan amendment, uh, GP eighteen-zero-zero-one. I'll entertain a motion, Mr. Vice Chairman.
I move that we approve GP eighteen-dash-zero-zero-one, um, the zone change for... I don't know how you want me to reference that, address or just the project. Inspiration
Excuse me, did you say zone change?
Um, yeah.
You have to do the general plan first.
Yeah.
That's always, I said GP.
Yeah, we're, yeah, we're GP from, uh, heavy commercial, heavy industrial to a PAD, PAD-type zoning would be allowed under the general plan, right?
The general plan is from PCI, which is performance commercial and-
All right, that's what we need to know.
And general commercial to plan development.
All right.
So, to clarify, GP eighteen-dash-zero-zero-one, um, change from PCI, and what was the other one, Scott?
General commercial.
General commercial to PAD.
PLD.
PLD.
All right. Do I have a second to that motion?
Second to motion.
Okay. I have a motion from Vice Chairman Waston, second from Commissioner Norwood. Any further discussion on this motion?
No.
All right, I'll call for a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimously carried. Okay, now, as for regarding to Z eighteen-zero-zero-one, inspiration at Cottonwood, um, to the planned area development, uh, as proposed. Vice Chairman?
I move that we approve Z eighteen-dash-zero-zero-one, inspiration at Cottonwood with the follow, following stipulations.
That's a recommendation for approval.
Recommendation.
Recommendation for approval to City Council.
We'll put a time load on it, too.
Uh, with the following stipulations. One, the project is developed in accordance with the master development plan submitted on February eighth, two thousand eighteen, and, two, the project conforms to code review, board comments dated August eighth, two thousand seventeen, and master development plan staff review comments dated December fifth, two thousand seventeen, January seventeenth, two thousand eighteen, and February eighth, two thousand eighteen. Three, any required supporting documentation is submitted to staff and approved. That could be drainage reports, traffic reports, surveys, et cetera. Four, the project comes back to the Planning and Zoning Commission for design review to include design of building, site plan, landscape plan, signage screening, and any other design-related aspects of the project typically found in a design review submittal. Five, a permanent sign will be installed at both entrances to the apartment complex notifying tenants of the proximity to the airport. Six, an navigation easement will be recorded against the property, which will include, A, a requirement to notify all tenants of the proximity to the airport, B, a requirement to maintain the signage mentioned above in place and in good condition, C, construction methods shall be made in a way to comply with the submittal noise study, and D, language of the navigation easement to be approved by the city of Cottonwood. Seven, each lease must include a disclosure and acknowledgement by the lease that they are moving into a building that is near an airport, and that there will be more air traffic and noise there than any other parts of the city. Eight, the requested approvals are only for- Eight, the requested approvals are only for development of the proposed 9.0 acres site to accommodate the apartment complex. Does not include any site approval for the 2.41 acres remaining a commercial zone. Any further development of the commercial parcel will require the appropriate review processes, beginning with code review board. Nine, a certificate of zoning compliance documenting the completion of the conditions shall be issued by a timeframe specified, and ten, with, uh, within the timeframe of, we didn't discuss that, what, what? Tom?
Two years. I think is reasonable for a project this size.
Sound good.
And I...
But you're ready to go tomorrow, so it's...
And I think the verbiage, we, I think...
Within a two-year timeframe from the approval from council.
To issue building permits, start construction, issue building permits.
From, no, approvals from council from...
All right, for, for, for doing what?
Timeframe.
Timeframe to start construction?
Yes.
To, does that make...
For permit.
To, or, to secure permits for construction?
That's reasonable, right, permit? Yeah.
So, secure permits for construction with a two-year period from council approval, our recommendation?
Yes.
Makes sense? Do I have a second to that motion now?
Second to motion.
Okay. Um, the applicants, do you, these stipulations cause any problems before we vote? Okay, you're okay with all of them? And a two-year, all right?
Tomorrow, tomorrow.
All right. I have a, um, a motion from Vice Chairman Wasden, a second from Chairman, or Commissioner Norwood for approval of, um, uh, the Z 18-001, Inspiration at Cottonwood. Um, all in favor? Indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Unanimously approved. Good luck, gentlemen. We're looking forward to it. Thank you. All right. Gentlemen, we have some order. Mr. Jump? Okay, thank you. All righty. We have a really important, now, to get to the exciting part of the meeting, uh, considered ZO 18-001 text amendment to the zoning ordinance, section 404, regarding small wireless facilities in right-of-way. Scott?
Thank you.
Tell us all about this.
Thank you again, Chairman Williams. Um, I don't have a screen presentation for you, so...
That's fine.
Text amendment. Z 18-001, um, next time, next time.
No pictures of towers and stuff like that?
Uh, we can't continue with it.
That's good, yeah, well, just, okay, I'm sorry, we'll...
I think there's a TV on in the bathroom.
Is there?
Right. We'll, we'll stop here for a minute, give Commissioner Hart a...
Take five.
Take five. All right, and, uh...
Torture.
Torture. Well, there's no football games on tonight, so we're...
You're sorry.
Olympics are over.
Try to get everything in before they start.
Wireless towers.
It's right across from, Scott.
Oh, yeah.
I think they're trying to pay for the...
Yeah.
They, well, they're, they're kind of, uh, oriented. Yeah, that's what we're figuring, 'cause you read that somewhere.
They're like Joe. I just have, I just...
No problem, sir. No problem. I, we'll just try to stay awake through this, go.
All right, so this is gonna be quick and simple. Um, ZO 18-001 is a text amendment to section 404 regarding small wireless facilities in the right-of-way. Back in March of last year, um, House Bill 2365 was signed into law. That basically allows wireless communication facilities in the right-of-way, and it extremely limits what cities and towns can do to regulate them. Um, it limits what processes we can make them go through, and if we don't respond within certain timeframes after an application is submitted, or we don't have an ordinance passed within a certain timeframe of an application being submitted, then they get to do what they're asking to do. So this ordinance is basically, um, as you can see in the House bill, basically what they were requiring and requesting. The ordinance has been developed after looking at what other places have already prayed up and done. Um, and this is basically just to follow the new state law, the way out.
I move that we, are you ready for me?
Yeah, it's, it's, it's an item we don't really have a lot of leeway, like these others, we've had to do, and, uh...
Can I ask a question?
Yes, yes, you certainly can.
Yeah. Just for, so I can learn something. What do they mean relative to wireless facilities by right-of-way? What, what is that? Could you explain what this means? I mean, public telephone pole kind of thing?
It means that any pole that is in the right-of-way can have a wireless facility put onto it, or they can propose to put up a new pole in the right-of-way.
And the right-of-way is, what's the definition of that?
City's right-of-way.
It's city right-of-way.
City.
Yeah.
Anything that the city, pipelines and water...
Basically, anything that the city owns as right-of-way.
And there, there are stipulations in there. I mean, there, you know, and if the city, if that, if it's at an intersection that's gonna be improved, then they can do that, and it's, they're, these are actually fairly small units. Um, they're not, they're not like the towers.
Sort of like an alternative to the towers.
Lot more of them versus a big one, yeah.
If you go to page two of that House bill, uh, line 16, number 18 defines what the right-of-way is, and that'll give you kind of a description of what that includes. So this is basically, you know, and they have different sections in here that says what can trigger them having to go to design review, or they don't even have to have a zoning review. So, and it's extremely limited on being able to make them come through that process.
Right.
So...
Sir, you know, the good thing, the, and I'd like, I wanted to make sure, as you read through what you guys have put in there, um, the additions, we do have some influence over the design that has to conform. We, you know, uh, it's not something that they can just plop down in there. If they're, if, we can do some camouflage stuff.
Yeah, and they're still limited to certain sizes of their overall...
It's like a six-foot, a six-foot...
Six cubic foot volume.
Yeah, volume, yeah.
They can't just go up and put a huge...
Five towers.
...constaticity up there and say, look at me. I mean, they're still restricted to...
Right.
Certain parameters.
Is this for telephones, or what, what, what would...
Small wireless facilities, so any sort of wireless communication...
We're gonna bike along.
They must've had a big lobby.
Yeah, well, it, it, yeah, I think this is probably an answer to, there's been a lot of, going back forward, we've had it here in Cottonwood, uh, with, you know, directionally large, 60, you know, 70-foot towers, and, and, uh, this is, maybe they're evolving, is my comment back then, is we've got this 2000, you know, 21st century technology with our phones, and every year they come out with a new phone, but they're using 1950, 60 technology, building these great big 60, 70-foot towers, you know?
Well, and if they still propose those, you know...
Oh, they could, sure.
They still have to go right, they still have to go through the proper...
Sure, they still have to go through it. Hopefully, this is an evolution. Hopefully, this is an evolution to finally they're paying attention to this technology, this new technology.
When Phil rents his properties to the...
Yeah, right.
I'd, I'd, I'd like to put us, something in there that these should all be, since there's, they are smaller, that they have, they're encased in fur, they look like bears on the top, and I think we could really market that.
Raccoons.
Yeah. Bears.
There you go.
Of course, then the people from Camp Verde'd be shooting them, so maybe not.
That's right. Uh, Mr. Vice Chairman, I entertain a motion for approval of Z 18-001.
This is a recommendation.
Recommendation, yes.
Uh, I move that we recommend to pass the, or approval to the city council for ZO 18-001, text amendment to zoning ordinance, section 404, regarding small wireless facilities in the right-of-way.
Do I have a second to that motion?
I'll say it.
Okay. Vice Chairman Wasden, Commissioner Hart has seconded the motion. Commissioner Wasden, uh, made the motion. Uh, any further discussion before we vote?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimously carried. Carry on, folks.
Thank you.
Very good. All right. Um, any discussion, I, we don't have any discussion items, how about any reports?
As you know, we have two openings on the commission still, and we have one applicant. We are hoping that appointment will come in March 6th, city council meeting. We still have another seat open, so we would like to announce again...
We actually, we, uh, end up having two now, don't we, even after this one's approved?
Right.
So we got actually three openings on our commission right now.
Two more open, yeah, you're cor- you are correct.
Right, 'cause you, Commissioner Kyler's going.
So we would like to announce again that we need applicants for the city, city, um, PNC commission. And we are running the advertisement, so we would like people to apply.
Right, and I'd, uh, encourage our representative from our local newspaper, who is very, appreciate her being here and putting through this to indicate that we, uh, personally, I would like to invite people from the business community to apply for these positions, as opposed to just old retirees sitting up here, uh, in deference to Commissioner Wasden, but, uh, it would be nice to, to me, uh, this does not require that much time, personal time. Uh, we come to a meeting once a month, typically. We, you spend a couple hours reviewing the materials, going around, looking at the different projects. Uh, it's not a killer time-wise. I know they're all busy and raising families and, and have other things to do, but, uh, this is the, to ma- to me personally, this is the most important commission in the city. Uh, you know, it's second only to city council. The things we do here, uh, in act, or, or actions can affect the, you know, the, this community in a very positive or negative way, and, uh, it'd be nice to have people who are gonna be living here 20, 30 years from now, uh, getting in on the decision-making and approval of some of these projects and new subdivisions and zoning changes. So, uh, we'd really like to encourage, I would like to encourage people active, younger, in, in the business community to come and apply for these board positions and come on board with us.
I, I wanna reiterate the three people watching us from TV right now. Please apply.
Yeah, please apply.
Like Baron, is there an age limit for...
No. 21.
There's no age limit for the...
Minimum, you mean?
Yeah, for members of the board. Is there an age limit?
Nobody asked that question before.
Well, probably have to, you have to be a qualified elector.
Minimum?
You have to be a qualified elector in the city of Cottonwood, so, that, that's really the only requirement. If you're a qualified elector, you could qualify to be on this, approved for this board, and, uh...
You're gonna get a softer chair up here. You're coming to these meetings anyway.
Yes.
Might as well take note.
Uh, we, uh, we do have one, uh, gentleman who...
Applied.
And, and he will be going before the city council on March 6th.
Right, so we have two more seats open.
Now, he's going to be interviewed and, and, and hopefully cross our fingers, uh, council sees fit to, uh, go ahead and approve his that night.
So that won't be interviewed.
All right, so they'll probably do a recommenda- they'll do a resolution to approve him, and he'll be at our next meeting, so we'll have...
We hope so.
Hopefully, have five people in our March meeting, so that, that helps.
What, what else is coming down the pipe?
Yeah. You can sit over.
There are several, uh, projects we are working on. I don't know which, anything we need to talk about it here, but, uh, some projects coming up.
Right.
So you will see soon.
All right. Any update on the 89 and Vine from, you know, we've gone through some informal discussions on that, but...
Uh, they're still working on the infrastructure deals, and that, that's coming close to end. And from our part, everything is approved. As soon as they come to conclusion, we will be going through some design reviews. Uh, design review part of the...
And approval, subdivision of, part approval?
So they will start with the...
All right, so they're, they're still on track to keep, keep processing?
Yes, it's still alive.
Okay.
The Big Bear Diner, they have a new welcome sign up. Was that, is that, was that originally approved? And I think they have a couple more bears on the property, but there's a big welcome sign now on, on a bear. I mean, is that something that we need to be concerned about?
They can have banners four times a year.
This looks permanent. It looks to me to be a permanent... Big welcome sign, facing right out across the intersection.
With the bears holding?
Yeah, big one.
Oh, well, I think we, that was approved, basically.
Was it?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we approved basically what's on, everything I've seen on the site, you know, and they do, they're allowed to have temporary banner signs, uh...
Well, that, it's not that I'm not referring to.
No, I, no, I think you're, I, I don't have a problem.
I haven't seen that.
No. Okay, anything else? If not, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
Motion that we adjourn.
Do I have a second?
Second.
So ordered.